We ready? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Hole for Monday, June 27th, 2022. City Clerk, please call the roll.
President, or is Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Norris, Counselor Sheffield, via Zoom, absent, or Counselor Christine Piazza, and Counselor Carter. And present also City Clerk Edward Chacon.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you. I have given Finance Director Yu Ha Sa for his birthday. So, we'll start with referrals. We're gonna go to 773, which is Parks and Rec Honkers LLC. So, Mary, if you could come up and...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come to you tonight to continue our contract with Honkers. Honkers is the company that we hire to do goose control at Eastern Point Beach, Griswold Point, Washington Park, and we've added about, maybe two, three months ago, we added the Thames Drew Park, upper and lower on Thames Street, because we did have a, the geese had found that land, and we're making it quite unattractive to be at, let's put it that way. So with adding that, the weekly request has increased, so $600 a week for, so it's $155 more than it was in previous year. So, we've come back with this every year. We have reached out to other companies. The closest other facility that does this is in Greenwich, Connecticut, called Geese Relief. They were willing to match our prices last year, but said that that would, you know, they were just trying to help us out if we were losing. I never know with, you all, some of you know who Ruger is, the dog that's been doing this for about eight years, so the older the dog gets, it's always up to whether or not the dog can just still do it. But Geese Relief out of Greenwich would match our fees last year, but they said we were significantly lower than what he would charge if we had to use him directly. So, reached out to Sue this year to give us a contract for this year, and that's what I have in front of you. It's in, you have.
And then $600 a week, how often do we use them?
They're there, she's here daily. Usually morning, afternoon, and evenings. She does know the rotation of the three, we have three different flocks of geese down at the beach, and they rotate between Eastern Point Beach, Avery Point, and the golf course. They just kind of go from one spot to the other. The largest flock is about 48 geese, and the smallest one is about 24. And so she, when she gets a routine of how they are down there in the mornings or the afternoons, she actually, sometimes there before they, she can watch them fly in, whereas they see her landing, her and Ruger come in, they fly away. So there's a consistent pattern with what Sue has done for us over the years.
And we use them year-round?
Year-round, correct.
So, part of this is about the disruption and harassment of the geese in order to get them to go somewhere else so that they don't, you know, mess up our beaches and other properties?
And it keeps, helps with the cleanliness. Years ago, when they started this with Honkers, it was because the beach water was getting closed down by Ledge Light Health District because of the amount of fecal matter in the water at the beach. So that's what kind of helped pursue this, and then it's helped us keep our beach free of that.
Any questions or comments?
I'm gonna sound really ignorant asking these questions. So, it's all year?
Correct.
Do we have to do it in the winter, because the geese don't go anywhere?
They do not.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
And this is, did we, were you able to know this pricing beforehand, so you were able to put it in your budget for the coming year?
Correct, yes.
Any other question or comments? I'll take a motion, Counselor Sheffield, thank you.
Just a note to Mary, is there anything for squirrel patrol, since they blew out my transformer last week? Is there anything for that?
Not that I'm aware of. Maybe utilities can help you with that.
I have excess squirrels around me, they blew my power out, so feel free to find a squirrel patrol.
Got it. Okay, any other question or comment? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of, let me see here, it should be July 5th, but let me verify that. Uh, July 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We are going to 742 Groton Utilities. Josh, if you can come up, take a seat. I think you all have met Josh Rarick. So Josh, let's just, we'll start down the line, we'll start with the electrical power products.
Yes, sir. So this is a relay, this is a, not the relay, it's the relay panel construction, so if you think about it, it's like a stereo system in your car. The stereo works by itself, but you need something to put it in. That's what we're asking for here. It's $158,000. However, we've seen with the supply chain recently that vendors are coming back telling us that they can't make any modifications or any changes, or they just cancel the entire purchase order. So we're coming and asking for a 30% contingency to make sure we don't have to come back and ask again.
This is, it's here? It's 742-1, R-22-06-82? You don't have that?
I do.
Well, that's the, that may be the backup.
You could have.
But there's a...
You can just have this one, because I have it on my desk.
Okay, any questions or comments on this motion? Counselor Norris?
It's just a general question, actually. I've seen a lot of projects where there are 25, 30% contingencies, and I'm wondering, is that a patent from years, or is that something?
No, so prior, prior to my arrival and Bruce starting our positions, the standard for Groton Utilities was always 10%. However, the industry norm, sorry, the industry norm is 25 to 40%. We're not, we're not trying to get up to the 40%, but we are trying to hold ourselves comfortable at 25, so we don't have to come back and ask for special meetings to get you guys again.
Got it, so it's pretty much a benchmark?
It is, yes.
One of the, one of the challenges we had is during COVID, we had supply chain issues, and the last motion, the utilities to discuss is coming for you tonight, is we are having a special Groton Utilities Commission meeting on Friday morning, in order to meet that, so that I can bring this to you on Tuesday, because they're gonna time out the Wednesday. And so we're running into, we're getting short-cycle requests. Now, at some point, we're not, we're not there yet, but at some point, we're gonna come and talk to you about supply chain management and the supply policy, and how to respond quickly to short turnaround items like that, and still meet the intent of oversight from both Utility Commission and the Council, because that's a challenge that we're having, and we're, we are doing some pretzel stuff to make that work, but it is working so far. Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I was just gonna ask to piggyback on that. Wasn't that the reason that we had that special meeting once, where we had to come in, because the price bumped up like 20%, and we didn't have enough contingency?
Yeah, that special meeting, that special meeting was entirely because of me and Bruce, yeah, we didn't, we didn't have enough contingency in that one.
Right.
So I'm happy we're not doing that, that we're planning ahead for that. I think it's, it's also probably such a pain for the employees to have to do this two times.
It's a struggle, but it's worth it.
Any other question or comments on this? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of 7:52.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Chemicals?
Yeah, this is just a routine contract that we sign every two years, with optional years, or three, four, and five. We were not able to get anybody to quote for the optional years at this point, just because of inflation, they're not sure if they can meet what we're asking for in two years. So this is a combined package contract to move for the water treatment facility, as well as our wastewater facility.
So instead of coming at you with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven motions, we put them all in one motion? And it's all chemicals for the one year? That we need for water and for wastewater?
One year or two?
It's two years.
Oh, two years, sorry.
It's a two-year contract.
Right, sorry, it is two-year contract, thank you. Any question or comments? Counselor Norris?
So I didn't see any quantities at all with the amount of chemicals that we're purchasing? So even though, obviously, I'm in favor with this, and is it possible to get some type of record of the quantities that were purchased in the past few years?
Absolutely, and I can, tomorrow morning, I'll send it to the Mayor's office, and we actually have the quantities that are estimated in this contract.
Okay.
And they were reviewed by both Joe Pratt, the Chief Plant Operator for the wastewater facility, and Paul Hyatt, the Chief Plant Operator for the water treatment facility.
We do have the cost per unit, some number of gallons, some number of pounds, but we can get you, we can get you the, the actual amount, the number, number of pounds or number of gallons or whatever, absolutely.
Does the amount remain, oh, I'm so sorry. You were still talking.
Well, I was just trying to get a comparison on usage over the past couple of years versus just, because this is mathematical, but if I could get usage.
So our usage, we'll get that, but our usage is going to be drastically different with the $54 million plan upgrade that we just completed.
Good point.
So we, we previously weren't using magnesium contactors and stuff like that, which we are using at this point.
Okay.
So there's some chemicals we're using, now we weren't, some chemicals that we were that we're not.
Right.
Because the processes, the process and processes have changed in the water treatment plant.
Then I'd say it just makes sense to wait another couple of years.
Okay, so do you want me to email it tomorrow?
I can get it to you for the wastewater, because that's consistent.
Oh, that would, that would be helpful, too, just for general information.
Josh, could you get that for wastewater for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Josh, thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Depot? Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, kind of the answer of my question is, I was kind of wondering if the amounts, quantity-wise, were similar, but I, because I was wondering about the new plant and how things would be different, so, and then the cost, is the cost going up? Are we having supply chain issues, where things even like these chemicals, and has the cost gone up?
The supply chain hurts us everywhere. We do, we have companies that were no longer willing to bid to Groton Utilities that in the past were. And so, and it's not anything against this Groton, it's just at this point, we, we're not one of their bigger, one of their bigger companies, but we're also not small enough to just take the rejects from the big companies. So we're just at the in-between point.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of 7:52.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Wesco?
This is, again, it's a routine transformer, transformer order, so that when the squirrels do hit your transformer lines, we can replace them. But we, so this, this is different. This is different than you guys have seen in the past. It's just because of the supply chain, we've seen a four times increase in sale, sorry, in cost. We've also seen an 11 times increase in time to delivery. We used to be able to get a transformer in between four and nine weeks, now it's taken us about 42 weeks to get transformers in, so.
The other, and that's supply chain issue, but the other thing to keep in mind, if we have a busy hurricane season, and there's hurricanes in other places here, that's gonna take out transformers that are in the supply chain, and put continued upward pressure on the supply chain. Counselor McCabe?
Do we have a certain level of, let's call it backlog of items, chemicals, things like that, so that we, that we have to maintain to make sure we don't run out of something critical, and then have that supply chain lag?
We do, we do. Obviously, we're never immune from a supply chain crisis, or, you know, category three storm rips through, we're, we're gonna be hurt. But we do have, for both our Groton Territory and Basra Territory, we have drop dead points where we have to place an order to make sure that we keep both territories sufficient.
So Don Rinaldi is in charge of the supply over there, and she and I talked about having a low and a high, and when you get to the low, you order, and it ends up being above the high, so that when you come in, and when it comes in, you're, you're at the high level when you go in. So there, we always have material in stock for routine items and, and things like that. So that's, that's one of the things I learned in my MBA, is, you know, to have that upper and lower limit, and not just be right there on the, on the very edge, and depend on just-in-time
Does the lower limit increase with the lag time of the?
It has.
I think, I think she's increased it, right? You guys have increased that?
We've increased it, and then you will see pretty much the exact same action item come before you, and, for the August, sorry, yeah, the end of August meeting, where we're going to be requesting pad mount transformers, so that way we can meet that same, we can try to factor in the storms and blizzards and hurricanes, so we don't run into any supply chain issues.
Any other, Counselor Norris?
I'm sorry, is Wesco a sole provider, or was there other bids?
So Wesco is a manufacturing representative for the largest four. We did reach out to Howard, who's the company we've preferred in the past. Howard chose not to bid to us this time. And Wesco was able to get a bid here that met all of our requirements, and they were the only ones that answered.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? Okay, Counselor Sheffield?
How many transformers are we purchasing?
Seventeen, seventeen of various different sizes.
Okay, any other, Counselor Norris?
I'm sorry. So, if this is a, a, an item, so why, again, that such a large contingency? Are we just going with the benchmark of 25 to 40 with all utility purchases now?
For the most part, and I can be honest with you, this transform, we think it's going to provide, will last long enough for the quote to survive.
Okay.
However, we've seen with this company, with other municipal utilities, that occasionally, they do say, I'm sorry, we can't meet that anymore, because somebody such as an ever-source can come in and buy up the stock, and we no longer have any.
Sure, all right, thank, thank you for your diligence.
No problem.
Any other question or comments? Counselor Carter?
Just, it's gonna be brief, not a question, all right? What's your, what's your title?
Certified Product Manager.
Product Manager, all right. So, this is a comment, man, like I've, I've been on for a little while, and when it comes to Groton Utilities, in this Committee of the Hole, right, there's certain times where we have, we have representatives from GU bring things forward, right? And, and I don't know anything about, I mean, half the stuff I don't know about, right? You know, that's why I don't really ask questions. I, I trust that you guys bring things forward, and it's like, okay, we need them, so they're gonna be passed, you know? But I gotta, I gotta tell you, man, I've been on for several years, and, like, I'm satisfied and comfortable, like, this guy is, knows his stuff, you know? And, and, and it's, it's, it's good that we're in a place where we, as a council, can simply ask questions, and just right on, he's there, and it shows that actually they're actually planning ahead, even by his statements, you know? So that's, that's, I think that's good for the city, and kudos to you, I like the way, I like the way you move.
Thank you, I'm not gonna take any credit, though. The Mayor and Ron have built a fantastic team around us.
See, but, but even that statement there, you know, that, like, he's on his way, you know? Like, that's, you know, it's about a team, and he, you know, you're...
We, we have, we have, absolutely, we have a strong team. Josh was brought on intentionally for project management, but one of the things, the things that you have reviewed thus far tonight have also been vetted through the Groton Utility Commission. So it goes through the Groton Utility, it goes through staff first, then Groton Utility Commission, and then you guys. Now, the, the next one we're gonna talk about hasn't gone to the Utility Commission yet, but we'll get through this. But, but we're, we are, we're nimble, we're flexible, we're resilient, we're learning from, from past.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, and, and, and that's what I'm saying, you know, I think I've built a, you know, to come here, and there's certain items, like you said, that I wouldn't know, like, this isn't my area of expertise, right? So I wouldn't know, you know? But, but the questions that the council are asked, there are some questions I would never ask, because I've been on here for a while, and I'm like, I mean, they say we need it, we need it, you know? But you're, you're answering everything, not only to what they're asking, right? It makes sense, but also the residents, the residents are hearing this, it makes sense to why we're doing and purchasing the way that we do things. So I think that, that's good, because that necessarily has not happened in the past, you know? And it's good that they found somebody, I've been thinking it's come more often, you know, I don't know, you know, that's not taking away from anybody else, it's not taking away from Ron or anybody, you know, but I, I, I like you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, so, anything else? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of 7:52.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, I would like a motion to move the resolution that's on your, the desk, it's R-22-06-85 into tonight's agenda.
So moved, second.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Josh, let's talk about the disstrand.
Yeah, I do have to apologize that this one short-circuited the system a little bit. It says on here that the quote expires July 7th. In all actuality, we asked the vendor for a favor to extend the quote to July 7th. The quote was only valid for seven calendar days, not business days, and that included the Fourth of July holiday on there. However, we were able to get them to do that, so what we're asking for you guys, from you guys, is $286,605 for material with a 10% contingency. This is material that is going to be used to construct Buddington substations by West Side Terminal or High Side Terminal as part of the 2022 ECT Bond Fund. And to that point through, though, I just want to point out, this is PTF reimbursable.
Okay, so we will get reimbursed for this cost. Also, we have a special Groton Utility Commission meet, whoops, wrong date. We have July 1st, I have a special Groton Utilities Commission meeting at 9:30 to review and approve this item only, therefore it will be approved by the Groton Utility Commission, and then I will bring it to you formally at the Mayor and Council meeting of 7:5, if it's, if it's, if it's pushed tonight. So, any questions or comments on this?
I don't, I don't get, so this is informational, right?
Nope. So, there's a couple ways to go about doing this. We could, we could, and you guys talked about the resolution, therefore be a resolve. Typically, it goes to the Utility Commission, and then it comes to the Council. Because this got brought to me late, I said, put it on the Committee of the Hole, we will talk through it, I will have a special meeting of the Groton Utility Commission, so that we meet all the wickets, go through the commission, and then the final approval by Council will be on Tuesday night. So, so the difference is, you guys are hearing this first, before the Groton Utility Commission hears it. There, there have been occasions where we have written to therefore be a resolve for approval, pending approval of the Groton Utility Commission, but the Groton Utility Commission will see this on Friday, and will approve my, they're gonna approve it, they'll approve it on Friday, because it will, because we'll explain this to them, and then I will bring it to you officially for your approval on Tuesday, Tuesday evening. Does that, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, so were there, are there any questions? Counselor Norris?
I have to apologize.
No problem.
So, you may have to repeat everything you just said. So, we're buying what kind of materials?
This is mainly nuts, bolts, lightning arresters, which are the cool little fancy things that if you drive past one of the substations, you just see like these little cone things hanging on top, that's to draw the lightning in, so it stays away from our system. It's just mainly that kind of stuff, and cabling, mostly, most of the minor material that we need to complete the substation.
So we're building a substation?
We are completely redoing the High Side of Buddington Substation as part of the CCT project.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So you guys have seen before the Valmont, the Valmont action item came through, that was for the actual steel structures. I know that we've brought before some M-spec stuff and some Seaman stuff, that was for the long lead time devices that we were gonna need to make the substation work. Now that we've approved our design and our drawings are at 90%, we feel comfortable that there's not gonna be any more changes, which is why there's also only a 10% contingency on this one. We know that this one's gonna be iron clad and cover 90, we'll have 90% of the materials we need for Buddington at this point.
So if you go to the Buddington Substation, and you look across the street, you'll see all that clear cutting that's been done, and all those new poles, and the new structures that are up, that's all part of this ISO project on the High Side, that where are we here? 1410, 12?
414101280.
Thank you. Right, so that's all, and this is all coming in to the substation. We've also, you guys have also authorized some work on the substation itself, but this is coming into the substation, power supply to. Does that give you enough information you can be comfortable with? Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of 7:52.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, okay? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thanks for standing on top of this, thanks for keeping me out of trouble. Second? Yeah, that's Tuesday. Yeah, Monday, we're all gonna be walking. On the 4th, yes, sir.
That's right.
Okay, so we're gonna go to referral number one, which is appointments. The first one is Eric Couture for the Eastern Point Historic District Commission, and he will be as an alternate member, and his term expires February 1st, 2023, because he's filling a position. And then his information is attached. And he lives down in Eastern Point, on Shore Ave. If you have any questions on that? Any questions or comments? Any hearing none, I'd like to, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of 7:52.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, the next two are relative, are new, and let me, let me tell you what I mean by that. This is for the Basra Utilities Commission. The charter talks about, for the Groton Utilities Commission, and talks about other boards and commissions, but it is silent on Basra Utility Commission. What I'm trying to do is treat the Basra Utility Commission like the Groton Utilities Commission, and since I have to come to you, not have to, since the charter says come to you to approve members of the Groton Utilities Commission, then I want, I'm bringing these two to you. One of them is replacing Dick Tanger from Lebanon, and the other one is Seymour Edelman, and just continuing him on, renewing him on the Basra Utility Commission. So under Basra Utility Commission, there are a total of nine members on that. So that, Deputy Mayor Depot? And, and, well, let me, let me be a little more specific. Flannery was appoint, went through an appointment from Lebanon, so they, so Lebanon went through this process, and this is who they accepted and said, here's our rep for Lebanon. Basra did the same thing, Seymour Edelman, he went through the first, through the selectmen and first selectmen, and they brought their name up. So that's, sorry, I should have continued on with that, but that may have addressed your question, or maybe not.
That was my question.
But it's, it's, it's not so much as a vetting process here by this council, as much as it is an acceptance of their nominee for this position. Deputy Mayor Depot?
So just to clarify, the legislative body there has reviewed these nominees already?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That is correct.
That's all.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
How many members of the Basra Commission here?
There's a total of nine. There's the, one, two, three, four. There's the five Grotten Utility Commission members, and then there's four. There's currently Seymour Edelman, Flannery, Scott Barber, and Ed Ballinger are the four from the Basra contingent, plus Cole Jester. That's not true, plus Lebanon. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move Flannery to the mayor and council meeting at seven five twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I'll take a motion to move Seymour Edelman to the mayor and council meeting at seven five twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Since Director Uhas is not here, I'm not going to go into the Grotten Utilities. You have it. He, at the next meeting, he can do a high-level overview during our comment portion. Okay? And with that, that's it. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you all for coming out.